Councilmember Abidi.
Present.
Althoff.
Present.
Carpenter.
Here.
Dalton.
Here.
Mattson.
Here.
McCusker.
Yeah.
And Mayor Robinson.
Here. All please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our second city council meeting for May. At this time, the Chair will take a motion to approve the amended agenda as submitted.
So moved.
Motion by Ken. Second by John. Any discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. That moves us on to the public input this evening. Citizens may speak to issues not on the agenda. Before speaking, please give your name and address for the minutes, and please limit your comments to three minutes. Seeing as no one is coming forward, we'll move on to presentations this evening. We have three this evening. The first one is the 2016 Wastewater Operations Award Presentation.
What that award is for, Mayor, is paperwork was done without fault. Testing, plant inspections, all passed. And it's given out by the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency yearly. Wes was given that award at the annual banquet a couple of months ago, and we'd like to give that to him tonight here and recognize his contributions, as well as his staff, to the waste water treatment plant.
Okay, Wes, come up.
Thank you. He's coming around.
For those folks at home, this is a certificate accommodation awarded to the Cannon Falls Wastewater Treatment Plant and its wastewater treatment facility staff, recognizing exemplary effort expanded in the year 2016 to comply with the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency's NPDS/SDS Permit Program. Your effort helps protect and preserve the waters of Minnesota. Signed, John Stein, MPCA Commissioner from the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency. Thank you. Thanks a lot, and thanks for all the hard work you guys do down there keeping that plant going and operational. Thanks.
Good job, Wes.
All right, that moves us on to Item B, which is the National Police Week Proclamation. And this week is, week of May 11th through the 17th, is National Police Week. You know, we're fortunate to have a real good police force in our city. They do a real good job protecting everyone here, and we're very fortunate that none of them have ever been lost in the line of duty. So they do face dangers every day and put their life on the line for the people of Cannon Falls. So I would like to read this proclamation. City of Cannon Falls Proclamation for National Police Week 2017. Whereas there are approximately 900,000 law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of the City of Cannon Falls Police Department, whereas nearly 60,000 assaults against law enforcement officers are reported each year, resulting in approximately 16,000 injuries. Whereas since the first recorded death in 1791, more than 20,000 law enforcement officers of the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice and been killed in the line of duty. Whereas the names of these dedicated public servants are engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington, DC. Whereas new names of fallen heroes are added to the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial this spring, including 123 officers killed in 2015 and 129 officers killed in previous years. Whereas the service and sacrifice of all our officers killed in the line of duty will be honored during the National Law Enforcement Memorial Fund's 28th Annual Candlelight Vigil on the evening of May 15th, 2017. And whereas the Candlelight Vigil is part of National Police Week, which takes place this year on May 11th through the 17th, 2017. And whereas May 15th was 2017, was designated as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of all fallen officers and their families, and US flags were to be flown at half-staff. Therefore, it be resolved that the City of Cannon Falls City Council formally designates May 11th through the 17th, 2017, as Police Week in Cannon Falls, and public police salutes the service of law enforcement officers in our community and in communities across the nation. Adopted by the City Council of Cannon Falls, this 16th day of May, 2017. Signed by me, Lyman L. Robinson, Mayor. Just like to say thanks to all our officers for what they do. I know there's a, like I said, we're lucky to have a good force here, and thank you for all your hard work and dedication.
Thank you, Mayor. I know that the Police Department appreciates the support of yourself and of council, and your proclamation, or recognition of the proclamation, is certainly appreciated by myself and my officers.
Anybody else have anything? All right, at this time, we will move on to our last presentation, which is the Cannon Valley Trail Draft Comprehensive Plan Update. Did we have Scott Repke, the Chair Director there?
Good evening. Councilmember Dalton said I should take as much time as... So he doesn't get rained on. So we're gonna take, no, we're not gonna. I'm gonna actually go through this very quickly. So as we go through, just formulate your comments or questions, and I'll address those at the end.
Scott? Excuse me, will you speak into the mic, please?
Thank you. The mic as well? Oh.
The Cannon Valley Trail has been working on our comprehensive plan, an update on it, for the last nine months. The last plan was in 1992. And nothing is happening here.
It just shifted.
Okay. This is a, oh, boy.
Is it taped back here?
Oh, I hope so. Okay. This is an informational presentation. There's limited time, so I'll move quick. Your comments and questions at the end would be appreciated. The trail's been in existence since 1986. We host about 100,000 people a year. And in 2016, you can see the different states that signed our guestbook at Welch. The process involves, what we did is we hired a consulting team. Part of that process also included public input. We do have a planning advisory committee, and they make recommendations to the Joint Powers Board. Our public input was, we had a great respondent to the request of public input. We had almost 1,000 comments. This is the format of the comprehensive plan. There's four chapters. The line at the very bottom saying that we follow the Greater Minnesota Regional Parks and Trails Commission guidelines. That's really important because this plan relies heavily on that commission in giving the trail grant money. So we are following their guidelines. Our vision statement is the Cannon Valley Trail seeks to provide a premier human-powered recreation trail experience through the scenic lower Cannon River Valley, be a vital amenity to a healthy lifestyle, encourage interaction between visitors and local communities, provide meaningful education opportunities, and be an exemplary steward of the diverse natural and cultural resources. It's a big vision statement, but I think we can carry it through. So mainly tonight, I'm gonna talk about the capital improvement plan. And the plan is organized in two ways. There's categories, and then we have phases. Tonight, we're gonna just concentrate on going through the plan through the categories. When we started the plan, part of it was to hire Ericsson Engineering to study our bridges and asphalt. And the study determined that 16 bridges need replacement or repair within the next 10 years. The asphalt is getting old. It's 25, some is 25 years old, up to 32 years old. And you can see the effects of age by the pictures. Ericsson Engineering also studied the possibility of going from eight-feet-wide trail, which we currently are, to a 10-foot-wide trail. This would be safer. There are gonna be some locations along the trail where it's difficult to go to 10 feet. But we would go to 10 feet where we could. Another part of infrastructure is water conveyance. Flooding is becoming more frequent. The city well knows that, that you guys have issues, so do we. We have erosion areas, five locations of slope failure, and there's four different locations where the Cannon River is starting to migrate towards the trail. Here's a couple of photos. The two on the left are self-explanatory, but the photo on the right is actually where the trail is slumping. For the bridges, asphalt, and water conveyance, we are looking at 9.6 million, or 79.4 percent of the CIP. Also, part of the infrastructure is trail connections, picnic shelter at Welch, modern restrooms. These are just some of the things that are part of the plan. And the modern restrooms was conveyed by the public through our surveys and open houses. They just said it was clear that we should have modern restrooms. Currently, we do not have any. So investment is required. And so for the total CIP, it's 11.7 million, or 96.4 percent. The next category is trail experience. It was determined, the plan determined that better accesses would make a more memorable access for people, which attracts them to come back. Connectivity, there's about 30 existing connections that are known. Potential or existing connections, so we're identifying new ones. The connections would make it easier for families to get onto the trail, and we would expect increase in use. And this slide didn't happen to work for me. What it's doing is showing you where all the connections are. Oops. So you can see there's quite a few connections or potential ones. Trail experience also is affected by education and interpretation. Our natural and cultural resources found along the trail are significant. Partnerships. We feel that if we make more partnerships, that quality programs will follow. Trail experience, we're looking at 90, almost 96,000, or 0.8 percent of the CIP. The next category is business basics. And land acquisition has been talked about. We would acquire land to protect and maintain infrastructure or maintain natural, cultural, and scenic resources. We'd also acquire property for facilities and services that would increase trail experience. In the past, we have purchased land from willing landowner sellers, and we prefer to keep it that way. The CIP priorities include bridges and Batuminas and water conveyance. Once we start working on these three areas, the cost of our maintenance will go down. Right now, we do spend a lot of time on the bridge decks, and we do spend a lot of time on water conveyance. As you saw in the earlier photos, we had sand piled up three feet. The plan calls for increased use, which would increase our revenue due to the wheel pass. More people would increase our revenue. And to do that, we would, we have talked about technology, ways to increase use, and then BMX trails parallel to the main tread. This would attract younger users. Increasing donations. The plan does talk about a community outreach position, and this would be a function of that position, is to look at increasing donations. And local government support. We're looking for an increase in support from all three units of government. And we have relied heavily on volunteers, and we would carry that into the future, if not increase it. Approximately, business basics is about 200,000, or 1.7 percent of the CIP. And the last category is natural and cultural resources. We would be updating our 1988 biological resource plan, and we would establish clear priorities. On the Red Wing end, there's seven parcels of significant archaeological property, and we're talking about uniting those parcels into a cultural heritage park. And the main focus would be on protecting and interpreting those resources. Natural and cultural resources would be about 139,000, or 1.1 percent of the CIP. We're 32 years old. We're established and well-known in the state of Minnesota with almost 100,000 users a year. Our infrastructure is getting old, and reinvestment is needed, which will benefit the local communities. 12.1 million in capital improvements are scheduled in three phases over the next 10 years. So this is giving you the idea that this is not all today, it's over a 10-year period. And we would also like you to realize that this is a cooperative coalition approach, that all three governments would be working together. Goodyear County, City of Red Wing, and Cannon Falls. Our plan relies heavily on external funding. If you want to put it in round numbers, we're looking at 80 percent for grants. In order for us to be competitive for grants, grants normally require a 20%, 25% match. So overall, the CIP is just over 12 million, and we're looking for 2.9 million from, it says local share, but that means the governments and any other sources we can find to help raise that money. This is the CIP total again, but this is in the early, mid, and late phases. You can see the percentages. It is spread out fairly even. Based on the last three years, local aid was about 29 percent, user fee 47 percent, donations almost 12 percent, grants almost 11 percent, and miscellaneous sales at 1.4 percent. And according to the Joint Powers Agreement, if the governments would wanna support our CIP, according to the Joint Powers Agreement, these are the percentages. And City of Cannon Falls is at 17 percent. And the numbers at the very end are what currently each government is funding the trail. So I've laid out two scenarios. The first scenario is based on a Joint Powers Board meeting we had a couple of months ago. And Commissioner Ron Allen stated that he was gonna talk to the county about the, about increasing the county support of $100,000 a year for the next 10 years. At that meeting, representatives from the City of Red Wing and the City of Cannon Falls also said, hey, if the county's gonna chip in, we will look at, or talk, discuss to our governments that we would like to also support. This first scenario is funding just over 2 million, and the support needed is 2.9. The second scenario is the three governments funding the CIP completely. And you can see the City of Cannon Falls would increase their support 49,300 over the next, every year for the next 10 years. And I would like to... I'm just gonna show you a video. This video is kind of in, at general terms, is basically the reason why we're here and the reason why we do what we do. And after seeing all those high-dollar amounts, this is kind of the other side of it.
I'm Tom. I work in marketing, but I also, on the weekends and things, just really try to get outside and explore what Minnesota has to offer.
I'm Caitlin. I work as a teacher, and I'm always looking for fun places to adventure, too, in the summer months. We heard about the Cannon Valley Trail from a friend. We're always looking for new places to day trip, too, and this seemed like the perfect place for a good bike ride and to get outside in the woods a little bit. We also love the location. We're always biking around in the city, but this gives us a chance to get out in the woods a little bit more. And there's also some really nice, small towns out there, too, where you can stop for lunch or for ice cream.
And then being able to couple a nice, long bicycle ride along with, hey, grab a beer here, stop at the winery over here, get some ice cream. It's a great way to kind of balance the entire day out. And you can tell there's a lot of work that goes into maintaining this trail. It's really well-done, always, the brush is kept back, and always well-paved. It makes it a lot easier.
The trail itself is really picturesque, so we're always stopping to take photos along the way.
We've seen raccoons, we've seen squirrels, there was a snake, not my favorite.
We've also seen an owl when we've been out there.
Some deer, a lot of different animals.
This has become one of our favorite new day trips, just because it's such an easy trip from the cities.
Other than just biking around, just make sure you save some time and check out each one of the towns along the way.
This computer doesn't seem to be working very well, but the last part is, is I would take any comments or questions that you might have.
If somebody wants to get the lights? So anything, anybody have anything for Scott?
It relies a lot on grants. Are the grants a sure thing that you apply for?
The Cannon Valley Trail has been very successful in acquiring grants. I would say our success rate is 75 percent. So if we apply and don't receive the grant, that doesn't mean we can't apply again or find a new grant pool of money. The Cannon Valley Trail Comprehensive Plan has identified 17 different sources of grant dollars.
I got a question for you there is, what about parking? How does that fit into all this? It seems to be getting to be more of a problem, and we're trying to figure out how to adapt to it. So is that kind of in your plan, too, more parking someplace, or?
In Cannon Falls, it was discussed that the commuter lot would be kind of an overflow parking for trail users. But part of the plan also says that there needs to be a safe route, and there are kind of a different, a couple of different options that the plan talks about. If that's it, I appreciate your time.
Thanks, Scott.
Thank you.
Thanks, Scott.
Yep.
Thanks, Scott.
Give us a lot to think about in the future. The next thing tonight is Item 7, which will be a public hearing for Tiff District Number 2 through 7. And we'll turn it over to Mr. Maroni.
Thank you. Thanks to Scott, too. I was able to sit as an advisory committee member on the planning process, and we enjoyed Scott's work. And Bruce, too, was as a consultant and learned a lot about the master plan and the direction that the trail wants to take. And I think it was very beneficial for the City of Cannon Falls. So thanks to Scott. The master plan and the direction that the trail wants to take. And I think it's very beneficial for the City of Cannon Falls. So thanks to Scott. Like a good book, I'm gonna start at the end of the story on the tax income and financing plan in the public hearing tonight. And I'll kind of generally go through the, the plan itself and the components of the tax income and plan, in this case for Grandpa's Garage. We've talked about that project before. You've heard some things about it. And tonight is a public hearing for the council to consider the authorization of tax income and financing to assist with the proposed redevelopment of that project. I think you're all familiar, this, this is the proposed area for the tax income and financing district, just underneath the yellow here that you see is the existing Grandpa's Garage. There's about three acres of land that goes hand in hand with that development. And if the plan is approved, this would actually be the tax income and financing district. So whatever would happen in, within the confines of these boundaries, whatever would happen in terms of investment in that property would then be captured as part of the tax income and district itself. So that's the geographic area for the district. These numbers will get a little bit more difficult to read, but I'm not so concerned at this point about the individual numbers because there's a lot, a lot of them on this, on this graph, graphic. But I want to just kind of show you how over twenty-five year life of a tax increment district, that's the maximum authorization for this type of district is twenty-five years. Contrast that to the one that was recently done for Strike Tool. That was a nine-year economic development district. This is a twenty-five year redevelopment district and that's a statutory, statutory distinction and I'll, and I'll kind of discuss that as, as I go through the plan. But what you see in, in, in this spreadsheet, or maybe don't see, is the, the primary components of a tax income and financing district. Start with a year in which new market value has been created. And in this particular plan, if Dave Olson goes ahead with this project this year. And the project is fully redeveloped by the end of this year, the first tax increment in this district would be captured in the year two thousand and nineteen. That would be the first year. The last year in a twenty-five year district would be two thousand and forty-four. Okay? So these are the twenty-five years there. Second thing is what this plan assumes and projects is that approximately a million dollars of new taxable value would be created on this property as a result of the proposed redevelopment plan. Now arguably, and I'm sure David Olson would, would agree to this, he's not able to be here tonight. He's in Chicago this evening. I told him I'd try to cover this for him on his behalf. But I think he realizes and I realize that, that this is a complex redevelopment. It has multiple spaces within a building. And in all likelihood, not all of the spaces are going to be fully occupied and fully renovated by the end of this year. It's gonna happen in, in phases over time. But what the plan presumes is that about a million dollars of new value is created effective for the first tax increment year of two thousand and nineteen. There's about two hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars of value in that property today. That two hundred and ninety-three thousand dollar value will continue to generate taxes payable by, in this case, David Olson. And the county, city, and school district will share in the taxes generated by the base value, the two hundred and ninety-three thousand. The additional, the increment, if you will, assuming a little over a million dollars of new value, that additional value then would generate the tax increment. And using the current tax rate of, of the city and the current tax capacity rates established by the state legislature. The tax increment in the first full year, gross tax increment in the first full year, two thousand and nineteen, would be about twenty-six thousand dollars. Right now, there's about twenty thousand dollars paid by that property in taxes, not including assessments. So, you know, it more than doubles with another million dollars or so of investment here. This does not include, the current taxes do, but this does not include the statewide property tax. The City of Cannon Falls, no jurisdiction, municipal jurisdiction can capture the state portion of the commercial industrial tax. So even though the owner's paying that, it's not reflected in, in the tax increment amount, but it is reflected in the twenty thousand dollars of existing taxes. So that's why there's a little disconnect between a million dollars of new value and two hundred and ninety-three thousand of, of existing. But if there's a twenty-six thousand dollar tax increment created as a result of the development, the state auditor takes a little bit of, of, of the tax increment. That's the state auditor column here. About ninety-six dollars, so not a huge deal. The city is able to capture up to ten percent for administrative reimbursement. In this case, we talked to the council before that the Economic Development Authority is willing to finance the cost of preparing this. In return for getting their investment repaid over time with part of the, the, the administrative portion of the tax increment district. Over the life of this district, ten percent of the projected tax increment is just under ninety-five thousand dollars. So, you know, the ten percent amounts to a fairly large number over twenty-five years. The cost to prepare this work is estimated at about twelve thousand. So there'd be plenty of additional revenue in this scenario. To reimburse the city for the annual reports, et cetera, that have to be done with, with tax income and financing districts. The projected annual net tax increment over the twenty-five year life of this district is about eight hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars. That's two thousand and nineteen out to two thousand and forty-four. And without going into the details of economics, you all know that a dollar today is not worth a dollar in the year two thousand and forty-four. So what this plan does, it does a net present value calculation to say if you collect eight hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars over a twenty-five year life of the district. And in this plan, it assumes a five percent present value rate, that's really worth about four hundred and eleven thousand in today's dollars. So what that means to the council, what that means to Dave Olson, what that means to this tax increment district is potentially, if this plan is adopted and this authorization is approved. Up to four hundred and eleven thousand dollars of present value assistance could be made available to David Olson to redevelop this project. You're not being asked to do that tonight, but this plan, if it's approved, would authorize that. Okay? So this is a pretty detailed assessment of, of what's there today, what's projected to be there following development and what's projected to be. Available in tax increment over the, over a twenty-five year life of the district. We all know it's a projection. We all know that the state legislature can change this considerably through a variety of ways. The city's tax rate would be frozen. This year's tax rate would be frozen for this district. So if the tax rate went up in the future. There would be additional dollars paid into the tax income district. If it went down in the future, there would be less tax increment paid to the district. So again, this is not pure science. It's more art in terms of these projections, but it needs to start with something and the longer the district, the more complicated the projections are. But that's the cash flow. More simply, there's a couple of things that, that do take place in a, in a tax income and district. And again, these pages are all in the draft tax income and plan. But as I said, this, this redevelopment district contrasts with the Strike Tool Economic Development District. What was done for Strike Tool is that was an industrial manufacturing expansion. And the maximum duration of that district was nine years for ec, for economic development purposes. This is redevelopment and under state law, it's a longer district, which the city council can adopt. But there has to be certain findings and certain evidence provided before a district like this is created to substantiate under state law that it qualifies as a redevelopment district. So how does it qualify? Has to be a structurally substandard building. I don't know if anybody's been out in, in Grandpa's Garage recently, but that's a forty-plus year old building. There's certainly some deficiencies in the building. And under state law, in order to conclude that it's structurally substandard. David Olson and, and myself worked together to bring in a, an architect who did a full code evaluation of the building. We had the building official staff tour the building with us, which is a requirement under the state law. There were several subcontractors, mechanical, electrical, plumbing that also assisted with this. Long story short, in the file, we have documentation that shows that this building does qualify as structurally substandard under the law. If it didn't, council can't do a redevelopment district. So we've done that before. That's part of the tax income and financing plan. The other thing is that, that the site has to be developed. And developed doesn't have to be a building alone, but the, but the property has to be seventy percent improved. In this case, it's a three acre site, large site. But if you've been out there, you see that there's a lot of blacktop area, there's a lot of parking area, there's certainly a building out there. It does meet the minimum qualifications for coverage on the site. So we're able to, to find that. So finding we had a, a bad building, structurally substandard building, and a site that was substantially developed. That allowed Dave Olson to make the decision to go ahead along with the EDA to finance the preparation of this plan and, and comfortably bring to the council that guess what, this meets the, the test under state law. So we've done that. This on page three, there's just a general explanation of the, of the project proposal itself, and I think we've, we've talked about that before. Dave Olson's vision of, of the redevelopment project is still a local food-based center. That would have food-related businesses and other commercial businesses occupy within what now is a little bit more than a sixteen thousand square foot space. So those would be the uses that would be proposed. That's what's been proposed from the onset. And within this plan, we talk about, well, what is the reuse going to be if this project goes ahead? So that's consistent with what Dave Olson has represented to us in the past.
That building is sixteen thousand square feet?
It's sixteen thousand, four hundred or so, yeah, existing building. Page four of the plan, and again, I can't, I can't underestimate, understate the, the importance that, that the state auditor and the state Minnesota require of, of city councils when they look at these long districts. And that is again, as I said, we have to be careful that, that the building and the site meet the tests under state law. And that the city councils that are going to adopt this are comfortable that, that those tests have been made, those qualifications have been met. And that this truly is a redevelopment, a project under, under state law. So again, on page four, additional evidence there that, that talks about, about complying with state law. The budget, probably one of the more important things of the plan, I just want to explain to the council how this is proposed to, to work under this authorization. Under the cash flow, you didn't see it unless you looked on your paper on, or online. You saw that there was a, a projected amount of tax increments payable over the life of the district, the twenty-five year life of the district. And on page five of the tax increment plan, there's a projected budget. There's four hundred and eleven thousand dollars of site-related and building-related improvements that are proposed to be taken care of or financed if this authorization is approved by the council on this property. The four hundred and eleven thousand dollars that was on the cash flow, but the four hundred and eleven thousand plus interest expense over a twenty-five year project. If money's gonna be put into the project today and it's gonna be repaid over twenty-five plus years, there's gonna be an interest expense associated with that. In this case, it's four hundred and some thousand dollars. So again, with the total projected tax income and revenues of, of just under nine hundred and fifty thousand, largely that revenue pays for the, the cost related to improving the building. The cost of money, the cost of interest, if you will, administrative expense, and to a lesser degree, the payment that goes to the state auditor. But that's, that's the budget that would be authorized in this plan, just under a million dollars if it's approved. So that's the cost. Which balances out with the revenues on, on page six. And then the final thing, because I think this is oftentimes confused. And it is different than the, than the Grand State Hotel tax abatement. And this is how it's different, or at least one way it's different. The original net tax capacity of the properties, I said, there's about a twenty thousand dollars or so real estate tax payment now, much of which goes to the state of Minnesota. Some comes to the city, some goes to Goodyear County, some to the school district. That original value, the two hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars of market value that generates the, the tax liability for that property. That will continue to be paid to the city over the life of the district. Nothing changes with the base. Tax increment, remember, is the difference between what's paid today, what's paid in the future as a result of investment in the building. Okay? So all this plan does is it takes some assumptions based on Dave Olson's proposed project. Factors those assumptions into what we know to be true today in terms of calculating real estate taxes for a commercial building. Projects them over a twenty-five year to provide an authorization for the right to use tax increment financing. We need to pull the public hearing, which we're doing tonight. This plan has previously been sent out to Goodyear County and the school district thirty days in advance of, of the hearing. And we followed the other statutory requirements for dispersing this information before the, the public hearing tonight. So those things have been done. If the council wants to proceed with this, there is a corresponding resolution that came with the, the tax income and financing plan. And if the council approves that plan, the use or the right to use tax increment for Grandpa's Garage for the project proposed by David Olson would, would be authorized. The second step, which is always the more intriguing one for all of us, is, well, what, what happens then from here? Is the project really gonna happen? We've authorized a whole lot of tax increment financing here. It's all based on projections. How does that money find its way into the project and get this project done? And those terms and conditions would be under the development agreement. So that again, would be a subsequent action by the city council. Where there would actually be a legal document brought to that says, okay, here's the deal. Here's the more detailed planning and the timing of this project. Here's the relationship in terms of the, the city council to, in this case, David Olson and, and redevelopment of Grandpa's Garage. Here's the duration of the district. If it's not twenty-five years, what is it? And who's gonna finance this? Is the city gonna write a check, provide a check to David Olson to help him finance the redevelopment, and then the city pay themselves back? That's authorized. That's one option. Or are we gonna do something similar to what we did with, with Strike Tool? Where Strike Tool made the investment and we just have a pay-as-you-go note with Strike Tool, or in this case, Bob and Marlene Banks. Where, where they pay their taxes for the next nine years following completion of the addition, which is under construction as we speak. They pay the taxes and provided they pay the taxes, we write them a check back semi-annually to reimburse or to pay them towards that note. So the developer takes the responsibility. Or do we do some combination of both? All those options are authorized in the plan, but no commitment is made by the city council as a, as a result of adopting this plan of how that's gonna work at this point. That needs to be worked through with, with the developer. Okay? So that might be at least my summary, the highs and lows of tax increment financing, but if you have any questions of me at this point, I'll try to answer them as best I can.
I'm kind of new to this, but this TIF money, is, is it gonna be all commercial space out there or?
Yeah, the proposed, the, the proposed redevelopment of Grandpa's Garage is all a commercial land use. Yep.
I thought that's all you could use TIF money for was commercial.
You can use it for affordable housing. You can use it for redevelopment. In this case, it's redevelopment. It could be, it could be developed for something other than commercial in this case. Because the redevelopment tax increment doesn't specify a use. In the Strike Tool, that had to be manufacturing. So it's, it's different authorizations under state law for, for the type of use, the type of project that's being proposed. But this one is redevelopment under tax increment and it proposes a commercial use.
Okay, you alluded to it at the end. The, the presentation was focused on a twenty-five year period.
Yep.
And you said that that's because it is a redevelopment, so it can go up to twenty-five years, but it doesn't have to go to twenty-five years. It could go to any period between one and twenty-five years technically? Okay. What if any other scenarios financially have you worked, because I think, and I forget if I heard this correctly, but. David Olson is not right now saying, I need four hundred and eleven thousand dollars exactly, which is interesting that that's the exact amount of the present value of the twenty-five year period to like, to the, to the one on the four hundred and eleven. But if he doesn't have a, is there an articulated number that he needs and that's why we went with a twenty-five to work out the numbers?
No, what, what, what we did on the numbers, and that's a good question. We did on the numbers is, was we reflected his estimate or his contractor's estimate of the, of the actual physical cost, construction cost of redeveloping the building to meet. The proposed vision that he shared with us on the plan. Okay? So we've got construction cost estimate budgets from him, from his contractors. We've got that. We, we know that in this case, and this is kind of the tricky thing with this one, is, is there's, don't quote me, seven or eight spaces for lease, let's say, in that, in that plan. And at this point, not all seven or eight spaces have been leased. So what we don't know in the projected revenue side is, is what's gonna constitute the tenant improvements based on different tenants that occupy the space. You might put a certain shop in, Morris might put something else, but you might spend this much, Morris might spend that much or vice versa. We don't know that because we don't know all the tenants yet. So what we wanted to do in the authorization to kind of allow this to go forward, because clearly it's been stated to us at the EDA level by David Olson. And he would say this tonight if he was, was able to be here, that this project doesn't make economic sense without some assistance in terms of the plan that he's proposing. It just doesn't. So we're gonna have to work through an agreement with him based on hopefully knowing a little bit more and who those tenants might be and, and get a little bit more specific detail from him on that to come up with a development agreement. But I think he's, he's very confident that if he goes ahead with this project, even in advance of having all the tenants there. That the numbers that we've represented in the plan are probably reasonable at this point. But we've got five years from the date of certification. If this plan is adopted and certified, we've got five years to make budget modifications to a plan like this if we need to. And, and I'm not so sure that we won't need to, just as we know a little bit more. But basically, he's not intending to go ahead with this project but for the tax income and assistance, whether it's four hundred and eleven or. Four hundred and two or three hundred and fifty. I mean, we need to work those things out. Cause it's, it's gonna be moving around here.
Could the term, the twenty, the yearly, year term, the twenty-five to whatever other smaller denomination if we came up with that, could that ever be contingent on tenancy percentage?
Yes. Yeah, the, I mean, the statute allows a, a wider range of terms and conditions for the development agreement and structuring the details of a tax income and plan. So yeah, the short answer is.
Fifty percent or, or more, it's this period of repayment or this, okay.
Well, and, and, and again, Cedar, in all honesty, I mean, if, if city finances this, if we say this plan is adopted and tomorrow the council says, we're gonna finance this and we're gonna put four hundred thousand dollars into this, into this program. That'd be a risky move by the council because we don't know for sure that four hundred thousand dollars is gonna be. That'd be a risky move by the council, because we don't know for sure that $400,000 is going to be generated over the life of the district. We don't, it says it is here, but this is a projection, doesn't mean it's going to happen necessarily. But the other way to do it is to have the developer do it. Say, okay, you put your $400,000 in, and guess what? If the taxes are generated over the 25-year life, or 20 years, or 15 years, you get the money back, like we've done for Strike Tool. And that puts the onus really on the developer more than the city. So we haven't negotiated any specific terms at this point, it would be premature to do that with Dave Olson. But we've talked about, you know, the different ways of doing it. And I'll just say that on the EDA side, the EDA was willing to go ahead and invest in having this plan done fully. And that's the marching orders that they gave to me. It was really Dave Olson to say, well, wait a minute, before we do this and incur that up to $12,000 expense, let's do the cash flows, let's look at different scenarios, let's figure out, does this really work for me, Dave Olson? So we did all that before this plan was developed, went back to the EDA and said, here's the scenarios that were looked at. Dave Olson says, let's go, this looks like this can work for him. Let's move forward and spend the money to get this plan done, hold the hearing, and see if the council's willing to accept it. So there's been a lot of give and take, I think, give and take in the last couple of months with Mr. Olson on this.
So what is he totally talking about investing out here, the total package? What's he figuring out spending on this building?
The numbers that he's shared with me on the construction side and really getting this project off the ground have been in that million-dollar range.
Right.
It's, I mean, for the council, just so you understand, you know, the EDA, because we spent a lot of time on this. I mean, essentially what he's saying he's going to do is retain the concrete floor, retain the fire safety system, the sprinkler system, and retain the steel structure frame of the building. That the roof will be removed, the walls will be removed. I mean, essentially, it's a brand-new building within what he's saving from the existing structure. So it's kind of a big investment, I would say, for what he wants to accomplish here.
The biggest thing that I'd like to say to the council is, is that I'm totally confused by this stuff after being in business all these years. If you're going to spend a million dollars, the bank probably wants 200,000 invested in it to make it work. We're going to stick our necks out here for 25 years. I don't quite know why we're in the lending business. I don't like doing that anymore. There was a time where you can invest in your industrial park and they would hire 40, 50 employees. I could see that kind of investment. The one thing that has changed is every time we turn around, everything is money, money, money. Our budget went up something like 8% last year. And now, basically, in the last three, four months, we've given away about a million dollars in tax base. And if we did this one, it'd be about a million dollars. So I don't really know how this is fair to the citizens of Cannon Falls if we don't gain on this tax business thing. If we keep investing back into things, but our tax income don't go up, I don't know that the citizens are absorbing the burden of this. So I have that terrible concern that I think things have changed a lot. I don't think the city should be in a lending business. I also, if I was doing something like this, I'd be perfectly willing, if his taxes are 20,000 now and when this is all done, they're going to be 45,000. I'd be perfectly willing to write off 50% of that tax for five years to help them out, do something like that. But I, to stick our necks out even for 10 years, I don't think is a good thing. And I don't think we're taking care of our budget very good when we do this stuff. And I think I'm probably the only one that thinks that way up here, but that's just how I look at, after being in business all these years, that if the risk is so bad that we have to put the money in there to make it work, that really makes me nervous. And if the risk is low, then why ain't the banks taking care of it? So I just wanted to give that input from my side of how I look at this. Thank you.
But without, okay, if he does nothing, that 20,000 is, that's it. I mean, we're not getting any more tax, speaking of like.
Okay, what, I'm saying now, let's say if he doesn't do it, that 20,000 is just there. I mean, it's taxes, which we're still going to be getting. But we're paying it off on the taxes. I mean, if somebody's going to invest that much money into it, we are getting, yeah, from the additional taxes, that's what's getting paid off. You know? So, I mean, it's.
So for 25 years, you don't gain nothing if you did it over 25 years.
You gain, well.
An existing building out there, I don't know what was wrong with the trucking business that was in there. I mean, that must have paid the tax base where it's at. I mean, if you put in, if you got 16,000 square feet and you put in 16, 1,000 square foot different little hamburger shops or whatever it's going to be, does that really help our employee base if that's all minimum wage out there? And not to take anything away from making minimum wage, but are they aren't the people then that can come and afford a house and spend more money and help with our development on the other end? So I have a lot of concern with it.
Let me just say, I'll follow up on what Morris was saying too. And Leroy and I have talked about this, but here's really on, because this one is, I think, it's not, unfortunately, it's not unique. But here's really the short history of that property. That's tax forfeit, it was nearly tax forfeit property. And I know, because I worked on a project a couple of years ago before it went forfeit with the owners, and I know how much they wanted for the property at the time. We had a letter of intent signed with the developer who wanted to remove that building from the dirt and build a brand-new commercial facility there. And I know what the owners and the buyer agreed to in terms of that transaction. Didn't happen for a number of reasons. Fast forward, Dave Olson came in and bought this just before forfeiture for half of what the price was on the previous project. Dave Olson has also gone forward, and with Goodyear County, the value of that property has dropped again for taxes payable next year. Okay? So what's happening on this particular property, and it's not the only one out along 52 corridor, it's been going down, down, down. So the question's going to be, will someone hold on to these properties and continue to pay, in this case, $20,000 for a piece of property that's 40-plus years old? Or do we do something like this to get new investment in the property along with some economic development? You know, it's clearly a trade-off, but in all honesty, what's happened on this particular piece is the value has gone down. And I really don't believe that someone's going to go out there and put significant investment in this building. Doesn't have to be a million, doesn't have to be 500,000, but I don't think anybody's going to put significant investment in this building and pay the kind of taxes that are payable out there to finish off the assessments that are doing payable out there, make the basic improvements to allow it to be habitable for something other than just cold storage warehouse. It's not, you know, it's not likely to happen, it really isn't. So it's kind of the cost of playing ball here, I guess. And whether everyone agrees to do it or not is your decision. But I think that's kind of what we're facing out in that south corridor with some of these properties. This isn't that unique.
Isn't that, isn't this discussion kind of a moot point? Anyway, we're not here to debate the merits of what David Olson wants to do compared to what was there before. We're here to look at what David Olson's project is and whether or not it's good for us. Whether the trucking company didn't make it is irrelevant to this discussion. I agree with Morris, $20,000 versus what we could get out there. And you also look at benefits for the city as a whole. Will people come to town? Will they, I mean, we talk about farmer's market tying in with this property. Will we get people to visit on a Saturday morning? Because they're going to go to David Olson's place and then come downtown to the farmer's market and then go buy ice cream. I think it all ties together. So.
And doesn't it draw people to an area where we have petitions, like every other month, that people are not going anymore because of our roundabouts, et cetera? Adding a multi-use destination there. I don't think one stop attracts enough people to go down to that in town and stay down there. But you have a multiple place, and it's not 16 sandwich burger joints paying minimum wage. These are, I believe that they're intended to be somewhat boutique, more, not high-end, but specialty shops.
Specialty shops, specialty foods, you know, a combination of different uses.
Like mini Ferndales.
Yeah.
But he wants to make it a stopping point. You know, people want to come here.
Absolutely.
Which is a good thing, you know? Because they'll spend more money in different spots, you know?
I think everything about it is good.
Yeah, no, I know.
I don't like for the city to stick the money out for this. And if that's what it takes to do it, I guess, you know, that's entirely up to the council. But I don't see anything bad about this, that it ain't a good investment. And I don't see anything, I don't care if it's David Olson or who it is.
Right.
It all should be talked about and brought out. But I just think it's a lot of money, and I don't know why banks can't do this instead of us.
So Dave, this resolution now doesn't hold it, I mean, it's not a, there's no numbers being decided tonight. There's no length of term being decided tonight. This just gives you guys kind of the authorization to go figure all it out, doesn't it?
Correct.
Okay.
One other thing, I think, I know you suggested that maybe you're the only person up here that feels discomfort with TIFs, but you're not. I too don't like fundamentally, and I know you feel this way, mortgaging the future, if you will, for a potential present change that may or may not come to fruition in the way that we intend. And that is unsettling. I think that, I think that many of us here feel that way. That said, that's why I like the flexibility of this, in that as Grandpa's Garage, if it were to thrive, then perhaps the city would be repaid faster, so that there would be some sort of, just what I'm saying? We could thrive together.
Well, I don't think, I don't think we should do anything over 10 years if we're going to do something. But I would also point out too, that one year, one reason we've had a good year this year is because Doc Mulder paid up his 137,000 out there. And he didn't get any tax increment financing or anything on that. So I'm just saying is, that gave us a boost here from Doc Mulder doing this five years ago. This is, you're talking 25 years out, I don't see any boost to this thing for the city outside of conference and business. I understand. But I don't know. You know, I'm here to listen, I just state my side of it.
Any other discussion?
I want to, go ahead, Leno.
We need to do the public hearing, I got to open up the public hearing. So at this time, I will open up the public hearing for Resolution Number 2277, approving proposed establishment of tax increment financing redevelopment district number 2-7 within development district number two, and approving the tax increment financing plan therefore. Is there anybody wishing to address the council under the hearing? Is there anybody wishing to address the council under the public hearing? Is there anyone wishing to address the council under the public hearing? If not, at this time, we will close the public hearing. And is there any other discussion?
I'd like to just remind people, it's not necessarily 25 years. It can be up to that many years. So it could be five years, it could be 10, 15, whatever. So we won't know anymore until after we do the authorization and then Dave sits down and does a, gets a deal worked out with David Olson, so.
So Dave, if you do it five years, 10 years, or 25 years, it's still going to be 411,000, or is that going to change then?
Yeah, I mean, the duration will change the numbers, obviously. But if we learn more specific details about the rent-up of the spaces and we can further target the amount of investment that is allocated to those spaces, you know, we can make adjustments in the agreement. So that can all be subject to change. So again, this is just the umbrella of authorization. We couldn't, if two weeks from now I came back and said, guess what? We need $2 million of assistance from tax increment to get this thing done. Guess what, we can't, we can't. So it's the authorization to work underneath, and we're just going to have to work through and get those details and come back to the council. And again, one advantage we have with the redevelopment district is not just the 25 years, but also the five years of activity to make adjustments and changes. Because again, this is not exactly the same project as Strike Tool, it's not. There's a lot of other moving pieces here. But the redevelopment district gives us five years of time to make adjustments, you know, to the project so that the city can tailor their assistance to the needs of the project.
And I wish the next time you come back with this, in the next step, we would have different options from a five-year plan to a 10-year plan to 15 to 25. So we could look at the different options.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution 2277.
I have a motion by Mike to approve Resolution 2277.
Second.
That was second by Ken. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion passes 5-1.
Thank you.
That moves us on to the consent agenda. Items of this area of the agenda may be adopted or they may be removed and placed on the business area of the agenda for discussion purposes before approving. Those at home, I will read the consent agenda. Item A is adjusting correct claims for the accounting period ending May the 12th, 2017. Item B are the meeting minutes for the May 2nd, 2017 city council meeting. Item C are the meeting minutes for the May 2nd, 2017 city council work session. Item D, Resolution 2278, accepting a donation from the VFW to the ambulance department. Item E, hire unscheduled part-time employee for the ambulance department. Item F, Resolution 2279, approving conditional use permit for River Edge Properties LLC. Item G, introduction and first reading of ordinance 353, amending chapter 152 concerning dynamic display signage locations. Item H, adding Dave Maroney, temporarily adding Dave Maroney to bank signature cards. Item I, annual funding agreements. Item J, Resolution 2280, supporting dedicated state funding for city streets. Item K, Resolution 2281, accepting a monetary donation for the fire department. And item L, Resolution 2282, accepting a monetary donation for the fire department. Are there any items anybody wishes to bring down?
I'd like to bring K down.
Item K will become item 9E.
I have a comment on I.
Okay, John's got a comment on 9. Yeah, go ahead before we approve it.
Well, I just want to say, one of the funding agreements with the Can Valley Fair were 5,000. I just want to bring up the fact that the fair is really, not really asking for a donation. We came to the city the last few years, and that 5,000 is ticketed for the Fourth of July parade. That parade's gotten expensive to put on, and we've always thought that that parade really benefited the city of Cannon Falls more than it did the fair. There's thousands of people that come and see that, and it's a way to show off the city on the Fourth of July. But the costs, and because we've got budget cuts from the county and the state, we appreciate the 5,000 that you give to the fair for the parade.
Thanks, John.
Okay, are there any other items anybody wishes to bring down? If not, the chair will take a motion to approve the consent agenda minus item K, which became item 9E.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ken, and a second by Mike. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's approved. That moves us on to item 9A, approval of Grand State Hotel Alexander Court projects. Mr. Maroney.
Thank you again. Three items pertaining to the Grand State Hotel project. If you haven't been out to the site recently, I mean, I'd be aware that the project has begun. Construction of the hotel has begun, and construction of Alexander Court has begun. And along with that, I wanted to bring a couple of items at the request of the developers of the hotel to the council's attention. First of all, Public Works Commission, back in April, the developers were, did meet with the Public Works Commission, talked about the sewer access charge and the water access. the Public Works Commission, talked about the sewer access charge and the water access charge. And there was a recommendation issued by the commission at that point that I'm bringing to the city council tonight, and for your approval. And that recommendation is that the developers feel that paying the nine thousand eight hundred dollars for the water access charge is fair, that paying nine thousand eight hundred dollars for the sewer access charge is fair. There was conversation at the commission level about not charging the six-inch water service connection for the water access charge, because that's simply for fire protection. So that recommendation is to waive that. That's consistent with what I think we've done in the past. And then the final thing is that they've asked for a five-year assessment at a five percent rate of interest for the just under twenty thousand dollar charges between the water and the sewer. We have done that in the past, so that's not precedent-setting. And that recommendation came along with the recommendation from the commission. So one item requesting approval from the council tonight is to approve the Public Works Commission recommendation for the ninety-eight hundred dollar SAC, the ninety-eight hundred dollar WAC charge, and then an agreement to specially assess that over a five-year term at five percent interest.
And that be paid on the tax bill now?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. So that's one. The second thing, I don't know if you wanna handle them individually, or maybe just have me introduce each one of them. The second one, and I don't know if we need the lights off on this, you can probably see it. Talked in the memorandum to the city council about initiating preparation of an encroachment agreement. This is the south end of Alexander Court, coming off of Sixty-third Avenue. And a little bit of a unique situation here in terms of the site development here, but there'd be a private road access coming south off of Alexander Court to actually serve the hotel itself. So this length of road is really private road, private drive, paid for, constructed by the developers. The challenge has been, this is a major sanitary sewer water main through this area. We have a significant easement there and a significant drainage way. So we gotta cross the drainage way, they need to put in, in accordance with storm drainage plans, they need to put in culverts to carry that water underneath their private drive access into the hotel across our easement. Typically, we would seek an encroachment agreement to do that. In addition to seeking the encroachment agreement here, the developers have proposed to put in a steel culverts here rather than concrete, primarily, again, to help them balance their budget. And talking with Greg Anderson and Tom on that, I think there's a willingness to do that. But if we're gonna go ahead with this, we'd like to have in the encroachment agreement clear that if there are issues with the steel versus the concrete culverts, that it's gonna be a developer responsibility, not city. And that would be part of the encroachment agreement. The third issue, and maybe, Tom, if I could quick have a, Ron, thank you. These colored ones are always a little bit more difficult to read. Clearly, I shouldn't have used black here. This is Alexander Court. You're all familiar with the street that's being built as we speak to serve the hotel site. The hotel would be built down in this area. The area in black is what's identified as a temporary access to Sixty-third Avenue. The complication that we run into is that with the construction of Alexander Court, it effectively blocks free and clear access by the hotel developers to build the hotel during the time that we're building the road. It just doesn't work very well. So we've been working over the last couple of weeks, Robbie's helped out, Morris has participated. We've worked with the lender and the hotel developers to come up with alternative plans for gaining them access early to the site. They don't wanna wait until probably the end of June, early part of July, to be able to access with their construction equipment Alexander Court to get to their site. That puts them into an opening well into next year, and that just didn't work for them. So recognizing that, we looked at other options, and the one that appeared to be the most realistic and most cost-effective would be to have a temporary construction access built off of Sixty-third in approximately this location, which would give the hotel immediately access, immediate access to build their site. That's the good news. The bad news is it's about a twenty thousand dollar cost. So we've been working with the lender, with the developer, the last couple of weeks to negotiate an agreement that we're proposing to the city council tonight, that the city council agree to share in the cost of that additional twenty thousand dollar cost for the temporary access road to the tune of ten thousand dollars. That's the recommendation that we're bringing to the council tonight on that. The ten thousand dollars that we're proposing would be part of the construction budget for Alexander Court. You recall, we got good bids, particularly from Rochester Sand and Gravel. We're gonna end up reducing the contingency amount that we budgeted in that construction contract, if we're gonna pay an additional ten thousand dollars here. But at this point, I think we're comfortable that that cost can be borne within the Alexander Court budget. And the trade-off will be if we run into some unforeseen site conditions, and we have some contingency overruns with the street, then we're gonna have to deal with it at that point. But right now, the number's still balanced between the assessment abatement and the assessment that was levied against South Ridge Real Estate Properties for this road. And I think we're comfortable at this point in recommending to the council that we share in the cost up to the ten thousand dollar, for the ten thousand dollar amount. So we've got that, the ten thousand dollars and the temporary access, seeking authorization to work to prepare an encroachment agreement for the crossing of our drainage wave, and then also approval of the recommended SAC and WAC charges, the ninety-eight hundred for sewer, ninety-eight hundred for water, and a five-year, five percent assessment on the project. Any questions about any one or all of those items?
My only question about the temporary access construction is, in reading it, I was like, how was this not anticipated? That the construction of the road would delay construction of the hotel in a manner that would be unacceptable? I mean, yeah, we can always look backwards, hindsight being twenty-twenty, but it does seem, could've been anticipated.
That is a fair question. And I think the thinking, Cedar, was from the beginning that as the schedule for the construction of the hotel moved from last year to this year, and we had already set well before that, working with Greg and S E H on setting the bid package for the construction of Alexander Court, I think what all of us were anticipating is that if we're waiting till the spring, that there would be accessibility, convenient accessibility coming through Midwest to serve that site. And it's just, with days like today, it just doesn't work near-term construction activity for the hotel. The cement trucks are too heavy, the materials are not easily...
We've had a different route.
Yeah. And honestly, it just didn't make sense to wait for Alexander Court. That was not an option that was well-received.
Sure, it was never, okay.
What, who did the study on the three culverts, or how was that arrived at? Did we do that study, or?
Greg, maybe you wanna chime in on that? That took some effort, too.
Yeah, this site presented many challenges. When MINDOT did the interchange, they had an extensive drainage study prepared, because they put new culverts under twenty-four as part of the overpass. We got that information from them, used that to design the culverts under Alexander Court, and shared that information with the developers' engineer, so they would accommodate a similar flow through that swale that matches what MINDOT has upstream, what we're putting in downstream, and their culverts the same, so that during the events that we anticipate, the roads aren't overtopped. So we use MINDOT's data that they use for the interchange to be consistent.
So, but we paid S E H to do this study for us and stuff, I assume, right?
Well, the sizing of the culverts on Alexander Court was part of the original design proposal last fall.
Oh, okay.
So that was all done. We shared MINDOT's study with the developers' engineer, and they used that to design it. We double-checked it as part of our site review to make sure that their drainage area of culverts matches what needs to be done.
So that was originally figured in there?
Yep.
And then what, how long is that road? I mean, how many yards? What do they gotta go, a hundred yards or something?
The temporary access, or?
Temporary. I mean, how do you get twenty thousand four-inch gravel? Just lay a base across there?
Well, there's a fair amount of elevation difference, because remember when the...
Yeah, I know, I've been out there.
Yeah, so there's a fair amount of elevation difference. Right now, that's an estimate. If this is approved, and we go ahead and cost-share in this, we've told the developers, and they've agreed that we want itemized cost estimate and invoices for the project, which they've agreed to do. So again, the twenty thousand dollar estimate, Leroy, is their engineer's estimate to put in a couple hundred feet, I suppose? Yeah?
And then will that be tore out when it's all done?
They'll remove, they're gonna go over the existing curb. This also had to be approved by MINDOT.
Well, there is an opening there, though, isn't there, in the curb? I thought there was.
No. Well, it's the ramp for the bike trail, isn't it?
Right.
Yeah, I mean, you come about halfway down the hill, and there's one to the right. Is that the one you're talking about? Oh, okay.
No. So it's, like I say, it's, with MINDOT still involved out there, and to their credit, they promptly processed and reviewed the permit for the temporary access, which we all appreciate. That doesn't always happen, and I appreciate that for sure.
Okay.
But again, to facilitate the connection and to meet the standards and get into this site from a rather high elevation down to the bottom is gonna cost some money.
They also got money figured into, they had to redo the curb and some other stuff, too, you know? Just in case it gets damaged. They're overestimating.
Yeah, they're proposing to go over the existing curb initially, and if there's damage, it's gonna have to be rebuilt and replaced.
Well, factor of the matter is, if we wanted to continue, we'll pay the ten thousand. We want the hotels to stay on track.
Yeah.
Should we take care of this all in one motion, or do you want to?
I'll just go with all three right away.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. I have a motion to approve the Public Works recommendation for the SAC and WAC fees.
Second.
Motion by Mike, and second by Cedar. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Here is number two. The second part of this action is the approval of preparation of an encroachment agreement to be executed by and between the city of Cannon Falls and the property owner.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mike, second by Ken. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? And the third item is the approval of a ten thousand dollar expenditure to assist with paying costs to construct a temporary access road to facilitate construction of the Grand State Hotel.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mike, second by John. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed?
No.
Motion passes four-one.
They'll start.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you especially Robbie and Morris to have kinda chimed in and helped out here, too, so thank you.
So they'll be starting right now? I mean, soon.
Try so.
Soon.
Yeah.
Who's item to? Item nine B, which is nuisance property ordinance enforcement. Chief McCormick.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm gonna stay here so I can jot notes easier than up at the diocese, or podium, excuse me. Trying to get my memo to open. But essentially, what I am looking for is just some direction from council relative to, yep, I got it up now, relative to the police department taking over not just the enforcement side of the nuisance, but the noticing of nuisances. Previously, that was done by Public Works. When the police department took that over last fall, we created a document that allows us to provide the notice, gives them the information, set out the timeline. For those of you in the police commission, and maybe Public Works, I think I previously talked about some of the contradictions within our code. We're working to identify all of them, clean those up, and then bring them back to the body at some point down the road to simplify our actual code or ordinance for enforcement on nuisances. But in the interim, spring has come upon us, grass is starting to grow, and we wanted to have some direction so that I can better provide guidance to my officers in the department on how we're gonna handle these, so that we handle them in a consistent manner. So we know this is what the council's wishes are. We're not over-aggressive, but at the same point, we're not laxadaisical compared to what the council's desires are. And so at this point, I guess, most of you have read the memo. I'll just open it up to you for your thoughts, input, and direction.
Anybody wanna give the chief some input?
As far as approach for nuisance ordinance violations, I, can it be both?
Well, yes, it certainly could be. We could, yeah.
Your guys are driving the city constantly. I think they've got...
We could have, we could have a situation, and what Lieutenant Bergen and I had talked about was actually splitting the city into quadrants and assigning each officer a quadrant. And regardless of the shift, even if you're working the overnight shift, we're still getting two to three hours of, you know, good daylight, and then there's some in the morning. So they would be able to, you know, note those situations during their patrol time, follow up the next night, et cetera. But there are situations where we're not gonna see it. And then we'd be complaint-driven. And some agencies take just a complaint-driven basis. So somebody calls in, says there's a problem at one-two-three Mill Street, we'll go out, we'll assess it, and we'll respond to it. What I'm looking for is to find out what direction you guys want us to have.
That's up to the council, I mean, and which way you guys wanna go with that.
And right now, what we're doing is we are doing the complaint-driven. So if somebody calls in and complains, we send an officer out, document, and then we move forward. And much like when it was with Public Works, the vast majority of the properties come into compliance during that phase. It does not get to the enforcement size phase. We have had some properties that go in and out of compliance, and that gets a little frustrating for the residents around them, as for us. But the statute or our code is pretty specific, and that we've gotta provide X amount of time for them to come into compliance. And it doesn't say within thirty days of a previous. So we've kind of, we use some latitude in some of those, but it can be frustrating.
Hey, help me out here. So, right now, it goes to Public Works?
No, no longer.
No longer?
No.
So, I guess if a nuisance call comes in, it comes into the police now, right?
Yep.
And Public Works is...
Not in the picture at all.
Driving around, and they aren't...
They may tell us about something, but they're not taking any notice action anymore.
Okay, so what would we take action on? On changing what?
We're not taking any action on changing. Right now, it's primarily been a complaint-based system. With it coming over to the police department, we tend to be a little more proactive in, you know, our enforcement of things, but we don't wanna be overly active, overly zealous on it.
Well, I like that last part, because the one thing, I get complaints about this stuff, and the one thing that I realize out there as I get older, that we're all different. Some people really like their place to look nice, and some people, it's just a shelter and someplace to go home to.
Yep.
And if the car breaks down, and it's sitting there on the lawn crooked, who cares? That doesn't make them good or bad people. Sometimes this neighborhood stuff, to me, gets too carried away, so I have a soft spot for what you guys gotta do, is go out there and try to find a middle ground. But, you know, it has to be addressed, it has to be taken care of, but I don't see that we need to do anything different than what we're doing right now, outside of, if you're gonna get into really prosecute or something like that, boy, to me, that's, you know, there's always poverty issue out there, too. There's people that are in poverty situations that don't have the money to do things that they wanna do. And what I don't like about those situations, we turn around and fine them more when they don't have it to start with. So I don't have a good answer for this. I think it's a tough situation. I also think that I would like if the police board would talk about this more.
It's actually here for that discussion rather than the police commission, because this is really a discussion for the body, as opposed to a committee.
Are we talking, which subsections of chapter ninety-seven nuisances are we talking about? All of them?
Any and all.
All of them? Okay.
If you wanna say we want grass height aggressively enforced...
Inoperable motor vehicles, on off of parking and storage.
Just tell us how you want it done.
Because there are a number of different nuisances that are noted here. Not just weeds. We talk about weeds. We're not just talking about weeds.
Well, if a vehicle's sitting there with an outdated license, that actually qualifies for a problem, right?
Yep, those are, those are, excuse me, those are the ones that are actually pretty easy. What we've seen is, we'll go out, we'll make contact with the resident, they'll go by tabs, and then it's no longer not in compliance. Then the next step is, is to watch to see if it's getting used. Is it operational? If it's not operational, that's also, again, pretty easy. But if it appears operational, we get to the point where we can end up having a conversation, will you start it for us? And some are cooperative, and some have different answers I won't repeat here.
Might be fun to hear some.
Operating domestic power equipment in... Operating domestic power equipment in, in the times that are not permitted.
And those actually fall into there. We also have some in the noise ordinance area. The noise complaints are actually the easiest of all of them. You know, if it's six in the morning and somebody's doing something, we just go out and remind them that, you know, it's kind of early to have started this. And they usually knock it off and, and then restart it a little later in the morning.
Okay, but you're asking for guidance about enforcement, so if we were to have a blanket rule, if we were to try to say nuisance enforcement looks like blank, then would we be limiting your discretion to go out and just remind someone, hey, it's a little early for that? Do you know what I'm saying? What if we say, we want you to write it, we want you to write it up every time?
We're not asking for your, and don't, please don't take this wrong.
No.
We're not asking for your input on when we will take enforcement action or not.
Okay.
I will do everything in my powers to ensure that the officers are left with that discretion, separate from the political environment that you guys operate in, you know, as long as I'm here.
Okay, good.
So that's not what I'm looking for. What I'm looking for is what types of things? So, for instance, junk vehicles. If there's a, a vehicle in a backyard, it doesn't appear to be operational, do you want the, the officers out looking for those? Do you want us to wait for them to be complaint driven? Because as I was talking with some of the, the council members previously before tonight's meeting, you can go into one part of town and find a property that we've got a complaint on, look one block row or two blocks out and find three more properties in worse condition than that one that nobody's complained about. We can go to other parts of this town, and just the opposite holds, holds true, where there is nothing that is worse than that one in a three block area. And then, of course, comes the second part of, of what I'm asking, which is, how do you want us to apply it? Because we talk about community standards. Well, is it the community as a whole? Is it within that portion of the city? Some areas of the city have older structures to them. Some areas have newer structures.
Does the statute reference community standards?
No. When, when people call, call to say, well, this is, this is junky.
Uh huh.
And the phrase we often hear is, you know, this, this is junky compared to our community. And so, I, I think one pointed out, you know, much like the Supreme Court's decision on, on pornography.
On obscenity.
Obscenity, excuse me. It's, it's hard to say what is obscene, much like art. I necessarily, don't necessarily can describe art, but I know it when I see it. The properties that we've actually had to take enforcement action on obviously needed enforcement action, and they failed to comply. Our, our primary goal is to gain their compliance absent having to do enforcement. And, you know, we, we're willing to work with people and give them additional time if they're making progress, but some people don't want to make progress. And so, the question for you guys, as much as I alluded to in the memo, when we adopted the winter parking ordinance, council said, this is the ordinance we want, followed by, but we don't want you to enforce it every night, only when it snows. And we can go out and enforce our, our nuisance ordinances to the T, but that may result in more conversations that people make to Leroy or to you guys, because they're thinking we're being overly zealous on it. And we certainly don't want to. This is a task that the police department has, has come back into the mix on, and I would just wanna be able to provide my officers with some guidance. So that we can avoid you guys getting lots of phone calls, but at the same time, we can apply it in a fairly consistent manner.
Mayor, could I comment? Having done this twenty-five years, it really gets dicey sometimes. Some people will call in, I don't like that snowmobile out there because it's fifteen years old. But yet, three houses down, there's a brand new snowmobile sitting out there. Or you get in the neighborhood feuds where somebody comes in and says, well, what about him? I'll clean mine up when he cleans his up. So it really gets to be, if you wanna nitpick on it, it really can get, or the vehicle you can't see, I, I had one lady two years ago, well, if I could stand up on a chair and look out my kitchen window, I can see this truck with no tabs. Well, then don't stand up on your chair, you know? So it really gets to be an enforcement issue. How aggressive do you wanna be? And I, I found a lot of, a lot of loopholes and a lot of time spent on that knicky-knacky civil issues kind of stuff.
Well, I think, Jeff, that, I, I've told you this before, is that if somebody calls in and makes a complaint, I don't know what we can do but follow up on the complaint and see where it goes.
Yep.
I, I do know that some people are not bad people or just trashy people, so I do get concerned that if, if it becomes a health issue, if you got the old pickup set out in the backyard, you haven't put a license on it, and all four tires are flat, you got a woodchuck living underneath it, I think that's an issue. If you take and don't clean out your garage, and all of a sudden, a neighbor sees rats out there and calls, I think that's an issue. I think it's a health issue, and that, of course, has to be type, top priority, no matter what we do. But, uh, um, a person that's got the old pickup just sitting there and, and is eighty years old and can't part with it because he's been attached to it since he was forty, I don't, I don't, I feel funny about going in there and telling him he's gotta get his pickup out of there. I, 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 it's a fine line. I realize that. And it's, it's about when are you gonna be a good neighbor and when are you gonna get tough and enforce the law? And that's the dance you guys are doing. And I don't know, I'd almost rather you just take care of it and take all the blame and I'll stay in the house.
Well, one of the things that Lieutenant Bergen and I talked about was being complaint driven, but also having the officers watching. So, for instance, you talk about the old vehicle in the backyard, whether it's a, a pickup truck with the woodchucks in it or a snowmobile trailer or something like that, and going with also then sort of the grass. So if they're not mowing around it, just initiating that, hey, get the weed whipper out, knock it down, you know, we're not, as long as it's registered, we're not gonna get overly excited about it. It just essentially trying to keep the, the overall appearance looking consistent with the yard. So if the rest of the yard's mowed and that's not, something's out of place. So we kinda use the, you know, we discussed sort of the out of place appearance, you know, not to, not to say trashy, but just it doesn't seem to fit to that yard or that area. And we're comfortable in moving forward with that, if that's, you know, what, what you guys are comfortable with. You know, as I, as I mentioned, one of the other council members, primarily, I'm bringing it to you because now it's come over to us, and most recently, one of the suburbs, Burnsville, was very aggressive in, in their approach, and they ended up in a lawsuit. And I don't envision that happening, but I just wanted to have some direction from you guys on, on how you wanted to proceed.
Okay, uh, thank you. I think remaining complaint driven makes sense. I'm not concerned about a person, homeowner A has a complaint against them, they are tasked with some action, but yet homeowner B, a block and a half away, is allowed to do the same thing. Homeowner A can make a complaint about homeowner B, and then it's complaint driven. You know what I mean? If you want to see some remediation happen, undertake the effort to, to lodge a complaint. You can do that. We can't stop anyone from lodging complaints. So I think remaining complaint, complaint based, we already have the tools and mechanisms in place to respond appropriately to those complaints. You guys have exercised that sort of discretion. I, I don't, I'm not comfortable with the idea of establishing or having any department establish any kind of community standard for any area. It's not called for in the statute. We don't have to develop a community standard by which we judge then, and I think you're gonna get into places where that's gonna set up your officers for allegations of, of misusing that judgment. Do you know what I mean?
Yep, and, and specifically, that's why we were kind of, kind of looking for, you know, we've, we've sort of used the one to three block range in the stuff that we handled last fall, and just kind of looking at it, because that's the area that people are driving through that would be consistent with what they were seeing or complaining about. When you get into that larger community standard, I have to agree, Cedar, it gets very hard because we've got a very diverse community as, as far as housing stock and, and size of lots and, you know, all the other components with it.
Right.
And if, if you guys are comfortable with that, we're comfortable with that. If you've discovered it's not working, what I would ask is that you please let me know, and we can revisit it at, at some point down the road.
One thing before you jump in, please. I was not quite done. What, if any, mechanism do we have to track the number of complaints lodged against a particular property?
Now that it's on our side, everything is, is complaint based. So whenever it initiates, it immediately gets a number assigned to it, and then all action associated with that first complaint is tracked through that initial call for service.
Okay.
So if an officer goes out and ends up issuing a notice, talks to him, and it's one of the other things, is we're not doing door tags, we're making contact. We wanna make sure we know, we talked to Cedar and said, this has to get done.
Yeah, don't even, no, you'll never be talking to me, but go ahead.
Well, wildflower complaints. But the, the, the primary basis is, is we wanna identify who it is to that property, who we spoke with, so that we can begin our documentation.
Right.
Of enforcement. Then we're gonna follow up, and when they go back, they're gonna go back onto that original call for service, they're gonna document the follow up.
Okay.
We went back ten days later, they were in compliance, or they were not in compliance, and here's the next step we took.
Okay. And if they're in compliance, but they slip back out of compliance, there's a continuous track, so that escalation would occur?
Right. If they, they come into compliance, and then they go back out of compliance, two months later, it's gonna get a new number. So we're gonna be able to look back previously and see that we took this action, and now this is what we did and the action we took.
Okay.
So we can tell on one address, multiple complaints outside of the period, let's say John calls to complain about your flowers, we give you the notice, and Mike calls four days later to complain about your flowers. We're not gonna generate a new number on that. We're gonna wait for those ten days to come into compliance to lapse before we would generate a new, a new complaint component.
Okay, but a continuous track of escalation exists. Okay, that's what I wanted to check. Thank you.
So is, what's the council's consensus on this?
I have another question for Jeff. Is there not enough teeth in our ordinance as far as these multiple violators are concerned? Is there something that we can do to dissuade the repeat offenders from repeating?
Probably not. I mean, it's a misdemeanor, so in theory, we can issue a citation, they can go in, they pay the citation, and they go on probation for three months. And three months later, they go right back to the condition it was. We issue another citation, they go back into court. That's gonna take place multiple times, and at some point, after two or three, the prosecutor's gonna go, this isn't working, and, you know, look to the court for, for their actions, just different, and maybe it's increased, um, length of probation, you know, something like that. The other thing that happens if they don't cling it up is that we then, as a city, go into the process to do that cling up. That can be a lengthy process. If the person pleads not guilty, we've gotta go all the way through the criminal side before we can get to the civil component. And, you know, then it's seeking the authority from the court to enforce the cling up. I think we've done it twice in, in my time here. And then typically, the city covers all the costs associated with it, and then it's brought back before council to be put against the property taxes.
Well, I agree with Leroy. Why can't we all just be good neighbors?
We would like that very much.
I think, uh, I think you use your better judgment, you gotta follow the laws, but I think you have small-town compassion. I, when you use the word criminal air court for having trash or not taking care of your place, I don't like to hear that. But I, I think you guys are doing a good job. I, I think you just deal with it the way you have, and if it becomes an issue, come back to us again.
Again, the, the, the criminal side is just because that's the court that it's handled when issued a, a citation.
Right, I understand.
But again, probably, you know, one out of twenty gets to the point where we're, we're having to consider issuing citations. So most of them come into compliance. When Public Works was doing it, Tom would go out, make the contacts, we would hear on, you know, again, those one in twenties, where we would then initiate our steps. What we're doing now is essentially with us doing everything, we just initiate that process earlier. Therefore, if they're not coming into compliance, we can issue that citation sooner. And at the end of the day, it's quality of life. And we're not trying to impact that person's quality of life, but we're trying to maintain the quality of life for, for that neighborhood. And again, what I seem to have heard from, from council is, let's not look at the city as an, a whole, but let's look at that area, that one to three block, and we'll use our discretion depending upon the area. You know, some areas, they're very isolated. Other areas are very dense, and we'll kind of take a look at, you know, whether it's in compliance consistently with that. One of the things we talked about was, you know, where, where do we draw the line as far as what's junky and what's not? If, you know, Cedar has a plow out back to till up her, her flower bed, is that junk when it's not getting used for, for eleven months out of the year? Or is it a decorative art piece?
I think it is.
Art art.
So it, it is, it is hard, and I think the officers do a good job of using discretion. I just wanted to make sure that you guys are comfortable with the approach that we're using, so again, we can apply it consistently in our, in the manner that we do our business.
Sounds good to me.
For the record, can people do anonymous complaints?
Uh, yes. In fact, property complaints.
Yeah.
Are non-public to begin with. The legislature has classified that as non, uh, non-public information. So when Mike calls in to complain about your flowers, and you say, I wanna know who complained, we aren't gonna be able to tell you, nor will you find his name on the document in our office because it'll get redacted off.
Sweet.
That we probably should change.
What's your, what's your number?
Moving on.
All right, so I think everybody's.
Appreciate your direction.
Thank you.
Great job, Jeff.
Yep. All right, we'll move on to item C, calling for a public hearing on utility rates. Lanell.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. At the last city council work session, we did have a representative here from Ellers and Associates that presented the utility rate study and some recommendations for those utility rates. So the next step in that process is to move forward with the recommendations by calling for a public hearing. I, actually, in the memo, I noted that it was June sixth, but I, it's actually June thirteenth because of the change in the date, so we'll make those changes accordingly, and the, if it's, if a resolution is adopted, that would be published on June twenty-second. So there are a couple of changes to the memo that went out. But the next step is to decide, is to call for the public hearing. We're recommending that that be held on June thirteenth, and we are also recommending that we follow the recommendation, there's a lot of recommendations in there, isn't there? We're suggesting that we follow the recommendations from the utility rate study that Ellers put together. We are asking that you consider a three-year resolution. This would allow for some additional budgeting assistance and for, for both the city and the public, and it would save the city some money in the utility rate study that we would not have to do for another year. It's not, this is not the first time that we've done something like this. We've done this in the past, so we do have past precedents on this. We're just suggesting that we take a look at it again to try to keep things moving forward. Years ago, we used to have water and sewer rates that went into effect very early in the year. We've kind of gotten away from that because of some of the delays in utility rate studies. This would help us get back on track by doing it in this manner as well.
Any comments?
Robbie, I got a question for you. Are, are we gonna debate this tonight, or is this just saying that we're gonna debate it on the thirteenth? I mean, do we wanna discuss this tonight, or are we just saying we're gonna do this on the thirteenth and then discuss?
Well, I mean, the thirteenth will be the public hearing. That, that would be the night that we would actually adopt it. Isn't that, isn't that right, Lanell?
We would like some direction from the council tonight as to what you're thinking so that we can prepare the resolution accordingly, so that it's presented at the public hearing.
Well, I'd like.
Yep, go ahead.
I, I'd like to, I would like this council to be the first one in five years that didn't raise a water and sewer bill. When, when we raised it only five percent, I understand, but it's, it's supposed to be like a ten, twelve-year program, which amounts to a lot of money. When my sewer and water bill is more than my electric and my heating bill, it just seems a little weird to me. And we keep crawling up and up. Now, the one question I would have for Ron or Lanell is, when you do increase it five percent, what is the total budget? What is that five percent? Is that twenty-five thousand? Is it thirty thousand? How much is the five percent that we're adding on further each year?
I'm not sure that I have an answer for you exactly of what you're looking for right now. One thing I would ask the council to keep in mind, though, is that we have some additional debt that we're still paying, not additional debt, we're still paying debt. And these increases help with those debt payments, and if we don't do those, we're already, if you look at the projected cash balances that were recommended, we're already below of where they suggest that we be. And by not increasing, that will just impact that further. So just something to keep in mind. So just something to keep in mind.
Well, my thing is, if it, let's say it's $25,000, okay? So what's in our reserves, in our sewer and water and storm sewer reserves? What, how much money do we have in there? The other thing is, my question for you would be is, we, we had a really good year last year as far as the balancing of the budget. For this year, we came out about $180,000 ahead. If, if, if we took, if it's 30, $25,000 or $30,000, why wouldn't we take $25,000 or $30,000 out of that budget and just leave the 150 rolled in there and try to go one year without raising this all the time? To me, if our tax base goes up, that's the more reason to not continue to raise these. So I, I, I just think we got to try to control this, that when you have a water bill, like for my place down there, it's $200 a month, that's a lot of money for people out there.
Leroy, one of the reasons we have to do this is because past councils and, and in earlier times, the stuff, the rates were not raised.
Yeah.
And we still have that debt for the sewer plant. Then that's, that's why we have to do this now, so that we can continue to pay that debt and get it paid off in 2021, when it comes off the books.
But I'm just saying, we, we can do it different ways. It doesn't always have to be where we added on to that. I mean, if we took the $30,000 out of the 180, we'd still be $150,000 ahead, and we wouldn't have to raise it for one year. So to me, I would like to hear some alternative facts besides raising it all the time.
Well, Lanell, pay the debt off. I mean, and then we'll have to go back and levy that, those dollars to pay the debt off.
Right. And these numbers, like 30,000, that is your guesstimate. I don't recall that that's what the number is, and I know this is all in the, there it is, the Financial Management Plan Utility Rate Study.
If you, if you look at the utility rate study, the impact analysis, I mean, assuming a residential unit uses 800 cubic feet, it's, it's in the, in your paperwork there, says that in 2018, if it was raised, it would raise it $5 a month.
And I bet that there was something in that utility rate study that talks about the overall, well, I know it talked about the reserve amount.
Yep.
So these questions, a lot of these questions you're asking, Leroy, were answered in the context of that work group that you just remembered that you were at. So I don't, we don't have those excerpts, and I can't get to them online. We have two pages in our packet tonight, but that's, there was obviously a lot more material.
Yeah, I mean, it was in the last.
It was during the work group.
Yep.
And if we'd had the 100 homes developed that would have been through Sandstone Ridge, a lot of these economics would have changed dramatically and probably wouldn't need a lot of the increases.
They wouldn't have any raises.
Exactly.
It should be pointed out, too, that, that the proposals for a three-year, a three-year plan, and at the end of that three-year plan, that, that plant will have been paid off, or the debt service will be down, correct?
The debt service.
Because, because after the three years are up, then we see a 1% and a 1% increase.
We're getting close to the pound.
Yep.
Right.
Well, I'll make a motion, we schedule a public hearing.
Second.
I have a motion by Mike, and a second by Cedar, to schedule the public hearing for June 13th. Is there any further discussion? Not? All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Carries. Move this on to item D, the Charter Commission.
And before I get into this item, the Public Works Commission did have an item to bring forward tonight, too, if Cedar Chair, Chairperson Abadi may want to bring it forward under reports, or we could add it.
Well, we can, can we, can we do that, or we would have to amend the agenda again?
Yeah.
Oh, do it under reports.
To get possible action? Can you do that? Okay, all right.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. This was, there's not a lot of information out here. It's just, basically, there was the discussion that started when we were talking about the city attorney shall be present at all council meetings. We had the discussion there. You agreed that the city attorney did not need to be present at that, but that also opened the discussion about the Charter Commission itself, and the potential establishment of a Charter Commission. And I'm just looking for direction if you want to pursue that. We can, we can definitely have the city attorney look further into it, but it's a matter of establishing, the last time we appointed members, it was several years ago, and I don't have it right here, but it was.
97, so I mean, it's been 20 years.
97. And there were seven members, so the council could look for seven members and then recommend appointment to the district judge to reestablish the Charter Commission.
Well, I've looked at this charter a couple of times. What's wrong with it? Does it have to be tweeted, or 20 years, has you got to do it over? It looks good to me.
Well, one thing is that we don't abide by the, like, we, we've agreed to go with a practical interpretation rather than a strict literal interpretation of the Charter Commission with respect to the attendance of a city attorney. It says must attend each meeting. We've decided that means must keep up with the developments. And that's just what has recently come up in the last 20 years. I can't imagine that there's nothing that could be improved. Also, as we were, as we learned at the League of Minnesota Cities' orientation to new members, it may not be required by our charter to do it, but that it is somehow required, perhaps by statute, for charter cities like ours to have a Charter Commission at all times? Is that what you understood? That's what I understood.
That's the way I understood it.
Right. So it may not be that we have to do a lot of work to it, but a Charter Commission is part of responsible oversight of the governing creation document of the city. So maybe they don't have to meet all that often, but one would think at least a close reading for the first time in 20 years would be a real good place to start.
Neil, I.
I remember when it was voted on to not have the attorney, and that goes back a long ways. And that was an expense issue, where it was always about budget, and many times, the attorney was sitting here with nothing to talk about. And the city, I know, voted at one point in time to not have the attorney here. And as far as the charter goes, I, I don't know what the answer is, but I don't think anybody up here has any ill intentions, so I, I don't see why we change anything to have the, go hire the attorney again and spend more money again to set other things up, or do this, or do that. I, I just don't see why it ain't good the way it is.
Well, my point is, the, sure, it might have to be tweeted a little bit, or whatever, but you get a commission and redo it, then you get legal in there, and it costs you thousands of dollars to get it all right. It looks good to me, I don't know.
Would the, would the attorney have to get involved to reestablish our Charter Commission?
No, I don't think so.
No.
No. And establishing the Charter Commission does not create a blanket authority to revamp the charter and throw it out and rewrite a new one. That's not intended or, or even anticipated. You're right, there's nothing wrong with our charter, otherwise, we'd be collapsing as a city right now. But again, in, in responsible governance of this governing body, this is what our, our leaders at the state legislature believe is the best practice, and we haven't done it for 20 years.
I mean, the last time it was updated was, or voted on, was in 2012.
Okay, but was it, was there a commission at that point, or was it just voted to, what was, I don't understand.
There were, the last time a commission was reported, according to what he gave us, was in 97, was when they, when their terms ended.
Right.
So we're looking at 30 years.
Oh, right, I'm not even doing math correctly.
Or 20 years.
20 years, yeah.
Yeah.
Whatever the Charter Commission developed, right, would be, would that, would they bring that back to the council for review and approval, or do they act unilaterally to make changes? I doubt they would, yeah, act unilaterally.
As I understand it, the council can make changes to the charter, but it would have to go to the vote of the public. And I think that's what happened in 2012.
Okay, right.
So I mean, it's up, it's up to the council if you want to reestablish the Charter Commission, to have it looked at and go through the procedures for that.
I'd like to leave it alone and revalue it in six months or something. I just, I don't see any reason to change it.
Again, we're not talking about voting to change the charter tonight. This is voting to establish a Charter Commission to be in compliance with state law. So you are now advocating to just put off complying for longer, for a reason. You can do that, of course, we all can.
Well, we've been doing it for how many years?
Does that make it right?
Well, I, I don't think anybody has any ill intent here. I, I mean, the speed limit is 50.
Is that the only thing that would get wrong?
And my intent is to go 50. Now, whether I didn't go to night class to learn how to go 50, I don't think that's important. So I, I don't know, guys, that's just my opinion.
I, I think the issue here is that Cedar, myself, and, whoops, sorry about that, and Ken Hall attended this training this year, and at that training, we learned that if we are a charter city, we need to have a Charter Commission that is established. I mean, state law, state statute says that we have to do that as a charter city. So.
That's part of the package of getting to be a charter city. We get to be unique, we get to do things a little differently.
We're special, remind that, too.
But this is part of that package.
Ron, do you have that statute available, or can you get that statute and bring it, bring this back the first, or the next meeting in June, so that we can, can look at it that way? I think that'll be the best, so that it can answer some questions for Leroy and others that may have questions on making sure that we're in compliance with the law on moving forward with this. I think that's going to be the best thing to do, and bring that statute forward, that, to all of us, so that we can review it before we get into this portion.
It's also an opportunity for community engagement, because again, there's only really one council member that can be on it, and the rest of it is, is made up of community members that have an interest in getting down to the foundation of what, what makes Cannon Falls special. So it's an opportunity. That's all. Thank you.
Yeah, I think at this time, I'll take a motion to table it till the first meeting in June.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Carries. Okay, moves us on to item E, Resolution 2281, which was the fire department.
Yep, I brought that.
Monetary donation.
They're looking to spend $8,500 on an infrared camera for the fire department, and I'm not questioning the use or, or the need of that camera. But I do, I do have some questions, and the chief is not here tonight, so I can't ask them, but I, I'm, they're looking for a new truck, and there's $190,000 or whatever it is in the equipment fund, and I want to, so I'm just wondering if this $8,500 would be better spent, you know, going towards a new fire truck. But I don't know that until I can ask Todd, so I'm asking that we table that one until we can get, maybe Todd here to address this.
I have a motion by Mike to table Resolution 2281 until such time as we can get the fire chief here to answer questions. Do I have a second?
Second.
And a second by Ken. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Carries. That moves us on to reports.
Mr.? Uh, as Dave mentioned, just a quick update, they have started on Alexander Court. Trees have been grubbed, some rough grating's done. They had hoped to do some of the pipe work later this week, but that's probably up in the air now with the weather the last couple of days, so.
Thanks.
With the weather turning, we've got some, did some patching, some cold patching, some spray patching, and hopefully, the plants will open now. We'll do some hot patches and get some asphalt work done, busy doing some dandelion control, and got the trail connection about completed.
Thanks. Well, welcome to your first council meeting in the chair.
I need more hardware on here. I can talk loud. All right. I just wanted to let you guys know some of what's going on at the library. Right now, for kids, the cardboard challenge is going strong. It's been going about three or four weeks now, and it runs into July. That's find cardboard and build something. We have all of the, the details on our website, our Facebook page, at the library, and Cindy also put something in the paper. And we also have a box of cardboard at the library, so kids can come pick up the cardboard, and if anybody wants to donate any for kids, then drop it off in our box. On the 23rd, we have book club, and on the 25th, we have a Legal Shield Identity Theft Protection Program at the library at 6:00. And summer reading begins on June 5th, and so all kids, wait till the June 5th to register, and then have at it.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Chief?
Again, I want to thank the, the council for their thought and discussions relative to the nuisance stuff, and we will go forward, and hopefully, you'll be satisfied with the direction we provide in, in that area. The mayor, are you going to be covering Memorial Day Parade?
Don't know if I will or not.
Okay. Just a reminder, Memorial Day Parade will be on the 29th. The impact is, is fairly minimal. It's, we do sort of a rolling parade route on it, so it doesn't over, overly affect too much of the traffic. There may be some delays for people that are crossing from downtown at the lights out to the high school or the other direction. Our newest officer is going to be starting on the 30th. Christine Good will begin then. We're going to go get the uniforms tomorrow. And I'm looking at June 13th, which sounds like it's going to be a very busy council meeting as the pinning for that officer. And because the council meeting from the 6th is delayed a week, I'm just going to throw a plug in right now for the bike race that will occur on the 15th. And again, there'll be some traffic disruption. The route has stayed the same as it was previously. The entrance and exit to the city may be a little bit different. I'm still waiting for the final details on that. It sounds like they're going to exit and go out County 20, 20 to 24. But again, it's sort of a rolling roadblock, so the disruption there, they're not under power, should be very minimal. But I'll have more details at our next council meeting, meeting, which will be the 13th, but that'll only be a couple of days ahead of time. I'm sure once the details firm up, obviously, the chamber of the bike organizers will get it to the beacon, but I just want people to be aware it's coming. That's all I have.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Ron?
I have only one notice, and that's for the meeting schedule. The park board will be meeting on May 25th at 6:30, correctly, Roy?
Right.
All right. That's all I have for tonight.
Thank you.
Lanell? Mike?
Planning Commission met last week on Monday and had some lively discussions, and both of those items were handled tonight in the consent agenda, so I have nothing to report from that meeting.
Okay.
Okay. Public Works tonight. First of all, we were very grateful to welcome our new citizen members. We now have a full, a full roster. Jaclyn, Jackie Pavick, Pavick? Doing it again wrong. Participated tonight, so we welcome her. One of the items that came to light that we would like to start discussion on and maybe even move towards a consensus on, so we're talking about Limestone Road. Limestone Road has settled in ways that are unacceptable. It looks like this is where the sewer lines run, and all the clay had been pulled out, and then sand was put in, but in some manner or another, it has settled in ways that are causing both unsightliness, and apparently, you don't want, you don't want to drive on there with, in a car with bad shocks. So there's talk about what to do about that, but that is sort of the longer version, or longer-term problem, although not too far in the future. But shorter term is that the developer up there has a number of interested parties in purchasing those parcels that have remained vacant to, to date. But they are concerned about whether or not the, you know, near-term repair of Limestone Road is something that would be assessed against those parcels. So they were looking for, the developer was looking for some assurance that those parcels would not be assessed the cost of the repair. Also, Greg has prepared an estimate of the repair, and it is between $45,000 and $65,000, that difference being if additional sand needs to be brought in to accomplish the leveling. Is that, have I accurately summarized that? Okay. So we're not talking about a West Side project, like millions of dollars. We're talking about 45,000 to 65,000. There was discussion, lively discussion at Public Works about how to finance that, whether it should really be the city, and whether maybe those property, or future property owners should be assessed, which would, of course, result in sort of a double assessment on those. be assessed, which would, of course, result in sort of a double assessment on those units. So the general consensus was, we didn't want to assess current and future owners, but we did want to look into whether the cost of this repair could be shared amongst the various partially responsible entities, such as the city, for, because we do, we have accepted ownership of that road, so it's, it's our, it's our baby. But Hinges did the construction, maybe they'd be interested. We could ask if they would chip in, and then SEH might be also asked if they would consider chipping in, maybe was even a donation of working kind. We don't know, something creative that would offset some of the cost of this still fairly modest project. So there's the longer term, which we're gonna be doing the asks about, but in the short, in the near term, could the council consider whether we wanted to assess this cost against these property owners? And if not, could we possibly come up with something to provide to the developer? These are the questions. Did I do that right?
Yeah, that's a good summary.
Okay.
Uh, the, the affected footage is somewhere around 250 to 300 feet of the, the last, very last section of that limestone road on the northeast quadrant of that. And the other thing that we talked about is that, that actually affects approximately six parcels, could affect the development of housing on six different parcels. So it does, on a $300,000 home, the city portion of property taxes on that would be about $1,900 per parcel, so it's, you know, potential loss of future property tax base, but, and then, of course, water and sewer revenues also, but that's kind of what we have in front of us. And the question from the Shire Construction, who's trying to sell the lots up there for the, for Hinges, is whether or not those properties would be assessed, specially assessed. And in particular, they have one property owner that wants to sign a purchase agreement, but it's the second to the last lot on the left, and it's definitely affected by this road section.
But that's our road, right?
Yes.
I mean, that, that is our road, we accepted it, I mean, and we should be doing the upkeep on it, and, I mean, if they'd already signed a purchase agreement or, or we're already starting to build the house, then, you know, we may have to look at assessing, but I don't think assessing at this point, I think the city needs to, to fix it.
Right. I, I think that was the Public Works Commission consensus as well. We didn't totally agree on every other thing, but we, I think we all agreed. Am I characterizing that right, Morris? We all agreed, we shouldn't be assessing the property owners. So if we can get the council, because that would be a council action, not a Public Works Commission action, so if we could get the council's consensus on that, then I think we could authorize Ron, on behalf of the city, to provide the requested commitment to the developer. Is that fair, to Shire?
I think so, and I, it appears that the lot would be sold and would be built upon.
Yeah.
Plus, he's got, what, three other houses or something going on up there, so...
Which is great, great news. Um, so can we vote on such a thing?
So we need to bring that as a, added to the agenda, or do we need to do it on the next, or can we do it under reports?
I think at the last meeting, you added something and voted on it.
Yeah.
I, I know I've been told before that if you want to add something to the agenda, if you want to vote on adding it to the agenda first and then take the agenda.
Oh, I'll take a motion to approve adding the Limestone Hill Road to the agenda.
So.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Cedar, second by Morris. Okay, that'll be item 9F. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Aye. No? Okay.
And to clarify, once, so now it's on the agenda, and to clarify, we are not voting on who, who is going to pay. We are just voting that the property owners on limestone won't, that they will not be assessed.
I'll, I'll pull my vote, or my no vote.
Okay. So 5-0 to add it. Okay, now at this point, the chair will take a motion to approve not assessing the future owners of that section of street.
Right. Okay, uh, so move.
Well, we could assess SEH. Oh, I'm kidding. It's getting late.
Let's just personally ask Greg. We're just gonna, like, take your car keys. Yeah. Just kidding. Okay.
I make a motion to move ahead.
Motion by Leroy.
Second.
Second by Mike. Any further discussion? Alls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries.
Okay. So Ron, can you email?
There's another lot sold.
Okay. Paul Shire and, all right, perfect. Uh, that's all I have, thank you.
Leroy?
Uh, just a couple of quick things for the council, the park board, which I thought we were gonna meet once a month, we're meeting every two weeks. Lot of things going on. We, at the next meeting, hopefully we'll have some stuff for you to vote on. There's two dog parks that are in the progress. One is Grandma and Grandpa's Park over by the swimming pool, a small one, and the other one is Big Park down by the Ball Diamonds at the disposal plant. So we've had some good meetings about the rock wall at Jod Burks Park. We've had some meetings about some safety issues underneath that grandstand, and just to inform you, too, that, that Banshell has got a beautiful basement underneath it that could very well be held for ball team meetings and stuff like that with a little bit of money being spent on it. The doors are the point where they gotta be replaced because the bottoms are rotting out, so we do have to spend a little money down there. But the park board is taking a direction that we want to do the dog parks with a one-year study on it. We don't want to spend money on fencing and doing a lot of things, just do the portable fencing and try it out for a year, see how the neighbors complain, see who likes, what they don't like, and then make adjustments a year from now. So I'll be bringing that up to you, and then I also wanted to mention tonight that those that didn't make the art show at the school last weekend with the kids up there really missed it, because I would encourage the town to go to the March shows, the talent is unbelievable. That's it, thank you.
I've just got one thing that I am, that I'm gonna add, I need to add to the agenda, which is basically getting John on a couple of our commissions. I'm looking at putting John to Personnel and the Planning Commission, and Ken, or Mike would come off Planning, and Ken would stay there, and then Ken would come off of Personnel. So do I have a motion to add that to the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Morris? All those in favor of the changes to the commissions?
Aye.
I mean, I had any motion, I had any motion, I'm sorry.
Motion.
Okay, motion by Cedar.
My second.
Second by Leroy. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
[crosstalk][1729.28]